Good evening and welcome to a meeting of your Mountainside Board of Education. Today is October 23rd, 2017. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meeting. The Board welcomes the participation of interested organizations and individuals, and schedules time for public comment, discussion, and input. People who have specific questions about school practices, incidents, or events are encouraged to directly contact the school administration. The Board regularly holds one meeting per month unless otherwise scheduled and announced. These meetings are reserved for Board deliberation and for review of items contained within the agenda. The Board reserves the right to vote on action items. Public comments shall be permitted at the beginning of the meeting for thoughts and reactions on items of concern. Each participant will be asked to give their name or address prior to making a statement or asking a question. In addition, time will be allotted at the end of the meeting for public comment on any topic. In accordance with the state sunshine law, adequate notice that this meeting was provided by mailing a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Union County local source and the Westfield leader filing same with the Borough Clerk and posting same at the Mountainside Board of Education office. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Joya.
Here.
Mrs. Jakosits.
Here.
Mr. Minks.
Here.
Mrs. Motts.
Here.
Mrs. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Ruben.
Here.
Mr. Venice.
At this time, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session. It is 7:10, I believe will be about an hour, may extend a little longer, but we expect to be back by 8:10.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to exec. It is around 8:15. We were turning from our exec that did run a little longer. I thought it would, and it did, and I apologize to the crowd if you were waiting. And with that, let's rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our September 26th regular and executive session meetings.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, on the regular meeting, September 26th, I voted no, under personnel number 17.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Joya.
Yes.
Mrs. Jakosits.
Yes.
Mr. Minks.
I'm abstaining because I was not here for the entire meeting.
Mrs. Motts.
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Mrs. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Ruben.
Yes.
Mr. Venice.
We have no correspondence this evening, so at this time, I would open the Florida public participation on agenda items only. Again, limit your comments to items on the agenda, and we'll ask you to give your name and address. Seeing none at this time, I have no president's report, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Lebarsky for her report.
So, I do, we only, I have two items, and one is our testing presentation, which we will get to momentarily. The other thing is a reminder that Wednesday, October 25th, is our family math night, and want to encourage all of our families to attend. There will be two repeat sessions in both schools at all grade levels, one from 615 to 645, and one from 650 to 720. And this would be an opportunity for parents to learn about our math program and practice hands-on strategies to support your children's learning at home. And that parents and school-aged children are invited. And during each session, teachers will give an overview of the grade level math program, and students will walk parents through a typical lesson. So we hope you will all come. It's not too late to say you're coming. And with that... This is our presentation of the PARC results year three, in both language arts and in math. Oh, in mathematics. So, we will begin. And we have a team who will be speaking at various times, and we will be helping each other if there's any questions that you may have along the way. So, just an overview, the first three slides show the 2017 PARC language arts literature. So the first, I'm sorry, the first part will be our language arts test. And the first three slides show the results as compared with all of New Jersey students and all the states who took the PARC. They're grouped 3, 5, and 6, 8, and they're 2017 results. The third slide is the cohort analysis. And the difference between, well, the cohort analysis is how the same group of students did from year to year, as opposed to if we just look at different groups of students, we look at that to get information on the program. So to begin with, and I know there's a lot of numbers here, so I'm going to try to explain them, and I know it's difficult to read some of the brighter colors. So across the top are the five different ratings of the PARC. Level one, not meeting. Level two, partially meeting. Three is approaching. And the two green ones are meeting, level four and exceeding, level five. And you can see the, how much the points are in those different areas, the range of points. The only area, the only columns that are passing are level four and level five. And so in that last column, it's the sum of level four and level five, and that's the total score. Now, if you're reading across, the top in each section is our students, the middle row in each section is all of New Jersey, and the bottom is all of the students who took PARC across the country. So if you look quickly at the very last column, you can see that we exceeded all of the New Jersey students and all of the PARC students by percentage of students who took the test. This is language arts now, in third grade, in fourth grade, and in fifth grade, across the board. This is six, seven, and eight, same setup. We also exceeded in level four and level five combination in grade six, grade seven, and grade eight. So, now, this slide is a little bit different, and again, I apologize for the small numbers, and I'll read some of them to you as an example. So these are the same numbers, basically, with 2015 and 16 included. And also, in the left are the numbers of students. Because we have so, our numbers are so small that oftentimes, it can impact from year to year, the different grades who take the test. So just quickly, if you look at fourth grade, in 2015, 73 students took the test, then it went to 98, then it went to 66. But we're concerned in this chart about the colors at the diagonal, at the cohort. And so that last number in the box, the lowest number, is the combination, that number again, of four and five. So if you take grade three, for example, that four and five number is 58.5 in 2015. In 2016, it's 61.2. And in 2017, when those students were in, I'm sorry, when those students were in grade six, it's 69. So those students, I'm sorry, am I, yeah. Where was I looking?
Fifth grade, it's 70 percent.
Which color? Did I go off the color? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the orange, I'm sorry. So then, in, when those students were in grade five, it went up to 70.5. So that's pretty good growth for that cohort of students. But if you look, if you go one click down to the grade four cohort, it goes from 67 to 68 to 69, much less growth. So those are the kinds of things we look at with this particular group of students. And we have to dig deeper to find out what's the reason there were, there was greater growth, what's the reason there was minimal growth? And we have to look at the types of students, what some of the issues were, what some of the questions were. And in a lot of, in that 2016 year, overall, both in math and language arts, we did take a dip. So some, some of the cohorts surpassed that, but some of the cohorts, for example, the grade five cohort, we went from 67 to 64, back up to 79. So, again, we have to look further to see, was it the test that year? Was it the way we prepared students that year? Or was it the students themselves who overall had trouble mastering those skills? So in our cohort analysis, we thought our language arts students and our program has improved students' reading and writing skills over the last three years. Every cohort improved from 2016 to 2017. So now, the next two slides look at different groups of students, both the highest and the lowest performers over three years. So again, I apologize if the print is small. So, now, just to explain to you, this are, these are the groups of students who scored less than, who scored one or two. Those are our lowest performing students. And we want this number to go down, which means that students, that we have fewer and fewer students in this category in language arts. And you can see across, across, if you're looking across, there are fewer and fewer students in these categories, which means that we're getting some of those remedial students out, and they're performing better in language arts. We're pushing them into the threes, the fours, and the fives. So our program, our language arts program is working. If you look, these are students who scored above four or five. And of course, we want this number to go up. So again, there's that dip in 2016, but there's recovery in 2017. We've recovered, and students have made much greater gains, and are, so our program has, has improved. If you look across, our program gains have improved. Our analysis of the language arts program, there's been improvement across all grade levels, as you, as you saw, there was a reduction in students scoring one or two, and an increase in students scoring four and five. Typically, some grade levels consistently perform better than others. We always notice that third grade is lower than all the other grade levels, because it's the first time they're taking the test. And this is a typical, a typical trend across state and country. But as they go through our program, they do improve. But our general, we're not, I mean, we're satisfied, but we're not done working with our language arts students. We want to continue our teachers, college readers, and writers program and fine-tune it, especially at the lower grades, because our philosophy is, this is not a three-through-eight test. This is a test that the third grade is the result of K1 and 2 and 3 program. So we want to make sure our K2 program is doing their part in preparing. And they, so they can strengthen the skills before third grade. We want to infuse close reading, which we will talk about what that is in another slide, and fuse more analytical writing across the curriculum at all grade levels, because our K2 students are doing closer reading, they are doing analytical writing at their level. So we want to make sure that is supporting the grade three program.
Just a quick note about the different clusters that are in the ELA section. There are five clusters, and so if you want to take a look at where we saw our strengths and weaknesses, in reading, there's literary analysis, informational text, and vocabulary in context. In writing, there's written expression and conventions. As we took a look, in grades four through eight, the area, the area that probably needs the most work is reading vocabulary. There weren't really big differences in the five areas, but if we were to pinpoint the one that scored somewhat less than the others, it would be reading vocabulary, and that is reading in context. Third grade, on the other hand, needs to work on writing expression and conventions. And so, writing in general, I think, is a focus for grade three. And we wanted to share that one of the strategies for strengthening our reading vocabulary in context is the close reading strategy that we are now working on as a professional development goal for all of our staff. Some of the things that close reading strategies do is that it is critical to developing meaning in context, which is obviously very important to being able to figure out vocabulary, drawing inference and analyzing complex texts. It requires the ability to determine meaning in context. So that is an important strategy that we've put in place for all staff members this year.
And one of the things, just, I want to draw your attention to that center note. As students progress through the grade levels, writing becomes a strength. Conventions, as assessed on PARC, and conventions, by that we mean grammar and usage, are not an area of weakness for our middle school students, which means that our writing program and our reading program are really reinforcing that they're learning it in a meaningful context. It's not separate from the writing process. It doesn't mean that that's all, that's the only grammar they get. There are many lessons which target certain grammatical conventions, usage conventions, and then they immediately apply it to their writing as an editing skill. So it has a deeper meaning, it's in context, versus just kind of memorizing certain parts of speech. This is a really meaningful way of learning and using those kinds of conventions. So now, we'll move on to math. And this, this part of the presentation follows the same format. The next three slides show the two, except it's slightly different, because at a certain point, math was broken into more than one test. So the next three slides show the 2017 math results, again, as compared with New Jersey and as compared with all students who took the PARC. The first two slides, again, are group three and five, and six and eight. And I just want you to note that the seventh and eighth grade, in this, in these next two slides reflect only general math. The third slide shows our algebra and geometry results. And the fourth slide is our cohort analysis. So if you look across, in grades three, we did better than New Jersey, and we did better than all the students in the PARC. In grades four, same thing. In grade five, same thing. So we have 73 percent versus 46 versus 34. In grade six to eight, 57 percent in sixth grade, 50 percent in grade seven, and the biggest drop is that grade eight group. And again, you'll note that the grade eight does not represent all of the students in that grade. Neither does the grade seven, actually, but the grade eight is even bigger percentage. The way our algebra and geometry program works is that any student who qualifies for that program, any student who has the ability, who passes the placement test, can enter into algebra and geometry. It's not always like that in other districts where they have many more students. They take a certain percentage of students. We take any student qualifies. And so therefore, this group becomes smaller. And it, so it, it looks, I mean, the scores are low, but there's no denying that the scores are low, but it doesn't represent the whole group. It only represents a portion of the group. So, just because they're all on the same slide, we want to make a distinction between sixth grade, which is the whole class, seventh grade is a portion of the class, and eighth grade is only a portion of the class as well. So here is our algebra and geometry, and you can see that these scores are just amazingly good. These are all the students who, who qualify to take algebra and geometry, and we have some really, really great students. And we, if you look at the difference in our percentage, we are double and, and triple New Jersey and, and, and so this is, this is the result of allowing all of our students to qualify, not giving a cutoff of numbers. So it, it just creates a skew, but we're very proud of the students who have performed so well in algebra and geometry. So now, we want to look at the cohort. Now, this cohort is all of the students, this cohort analysis are all of the students combined, because some districts choose to report it this way. They add all of the math students together. So if you look down at the bottom, those are all of our algebra, geometry, general math students together. Okay? So if you follow that cohort, our students are improving. Again, we have, in some of the grade levels, we have that dip in 2016, but for the most part, we've climbed back up in 2017. I mean, there are some grade levels that we want to keep a close watch on, but they haven't improved as much as we would have liked. But for the most part, we are seeing growth as a class. But many, as I said before, many districts choose to report all math students in grade seven and eight, but we feel this method does not provide enough information about our struggling math students. So in the next slide, we've removed algebra and geometry, and use, and as I said before, you see that seventh and eighth grade math students are, are fewer, but they, you know, and they are the ones that express, that show the most difficulty with math. So again, I apologize that the print is so small, but if you take a look at, now, if you take a look at those cohorts, it looks like there's a steady, like that grade five cohort, we get down to, we get down to the purple grade five cohort, it goes from 55 to 42, back up to 50. Grade six, 43 to 34 to 23. That, that group is, is, has some weaknesses, and the grade seven group also has some weaknesses that we are going to be addressing in those months to have. So we are not happy with these numbers. We, we are not happy, but we don't, we want to put them in a meaningful context while at the same time, addressing our lowest performing students. So here's our analysis of the algebra and geometry cohorts. So they've had a steady increase. And if you look at the numbers of students, they've also either stayed the same or increased in a different, a different, some, actually, 2017, we had a smaller group of students who had less students. But we've had some dramatic changes in the number of kids in a class, so it doesn't always reflect in grades. But all of our students who take the test do extremely well. So in our analysis, overall, there was improved, there was improvement from grades three to four, from grades four to five, from grade six to seven, and from seven to eight in algebra and geometry. We have identified a decrease from, in grades five to six, and in grades seven to eight general math. Okay? So those are areas that we're definitely targeting. The next two slides look at different groups of students, the highest and lowest performance over three years. So again, if you take a look at this, those students are, those lowest performing students in each grade, it's, it's not, it's, it's, if you take a look at math eight, so they had a spike again in 2016. We had more students who scored one and two, but now, in 2017, that number has dropped again. Okay? In math seven, same thing, we had a spike, but the students, the number of students who scored that low has dropped. Same thing in six. In fifth, that's the fifth grade group we have to take a look at, because that, we're getting more students who, who are performing low. And same thing in four, and in three, it's kind of leveled. But we kind of expect it in three, but the other grades, we have concerns. Algebra and geometry, that's what our students look like. Who scored, and the lowest level. So again, that number is, if it's zero, it means we have no students who performed poorly or performed in one and two. So these are the students who scored above four and five. And if you take a look at that, we are programmatically, we are increased, I mean, again, we had a dip, we're, and we're, we're back up. We're back up in most of the grade levels. And then we have the algebra and geometry included on this slide as well. Our analysis, the math students in grade six, seven, and eight who were targeted last spring, that means the general math students showed significant improvement. We have fewer students in the one and twos, and more students in the fours and fives. And that was just, if you remember, that was just in, we, we changed and made, we made some changes to the program and the order of things taught just in those last few months before the test. Students in grades five to eight showed an increase, and well, it's wrong if I said that. Grade five students, while the passing rate increased, the failing rate slightly increased also. And grades three and four did not grow significantly. So we need to address these weaknesses in our program. This is a high priority for us. What have we learned, and what are we doing differently? So, based on the concerns the Board expressed, based on last year's test scores, we adjusted the scope and sequence to ensure instruction and concepts before the administration of PARC. We reordered the instructional units, enhanced instruction in weaker areas in curriculum, provided additional instruction in LP classes, targeted specific curriculum standards for improvement in grade seven, statistics and probability, modeling and reasoning, geometry. Targeted specific curriculum standards for improvement in grade eight, functions, statistics, and probability expressions in equations, and geometry. Kim, maybe you want to talk about the deeper looks?
Again, the math tests can be broken down into their clusters, the areas that were tested, and there are four areas, the major content, supporting content, reasoning, and modeling. In those four areas, when we take a look at grades three through eight, there was a trend that the two areas of reasoning and modeling are the two areas that we need to work on. This involves explain, students being able to explain their thinking and solutions in explicit steps, finding flaws and faulty reasoning and correcting an argument, and showing answers using equations, charts, arrays, and diagrams, multiple ways besides regular arithmetic computational problems. And so, really, across the board, again, there were not huge differences, but reasoning and modeling are the areas that we also want to be sure that our students are prepared to express their knowledge. I think some of this is, not that they don't know how to reason, or that they don't know how to explain it, but it's not something that kids like to do in math. They don't like to be asked to write out, how did you get that answer? And if you don't, you won't get the credit. So we're going to be practicing it much more in class. We're going to be very intentional about being able to look at different problems and show or model that work in more abstract ways, such as equations, charts, arrays, diagrams, and so on.
So now, I, I will ask our two coordinators to come up and explain what, what all this means in grades K and five, K to five.
So, K to five, math teachers especially, are looking more carefully to align the Go Math scope and sequence with the New Jersey curriculum framework. Specifically, in K to two, we have taken note of the sequence of the chapters and made sure that we're prioritizing the major clusters to be addressed first, and then also, we'll be utilizing the Chromebooks a little bit more, so that the kids are used to seeing some more assessment-type things on the computer, as we feel that's something that might also be a shock when they go to third grade and to prepare for PARC.
So in grades three to five, what we realized is that, you know, PARC comes in the spring, and you're not done teaching the whole entire math book at that point. So what we did is, we looked at the New Jersey curriculum framework, and the framework lays things out much differently than the Go Math book does. We also realized what they consider to be major content. So what we did was, we compared where that major content falls in our Go Math program, and where the state seemed to have placed it in their framework as well. So we are making sure that we give priority while we teach the chapters to those major content clusters that they have. And also, we're changing around some of the chapters as we teach them, if it's possible. I know I could tell you, fifth grade, we're going to go from chapters one and two, and then we're going to teach chapter 11. It happens to be the last chapter of Go Math, and it contains all major content for fifth grade. So we are aware of that, and we're making those changes. We are also using Think Central quite a bit now. Think Central is the online component for Go Math. It's fantastic. The kids have the ability to take tests, they have the ability to take chapter tests, and you'll use similar tools that they have to use when they use their Chromebooks for PARC testing. So we're trying to increase that experience for them. We're even doing mid-chapters online, and just giving them more experiences doing that problem-solving using a computer and scrap paper, which is what they do in PARC testing, throughout the school year, and not just wait until the month before PARC testing starts.
Thank you so much. One more? Okay, good. Sorry. That's right. Another slide, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, how are we going to bridge the gap? This is what Suzanne and I are, are working together to do. This is our task this year. And we've already started to compare the end-of-the-year grade tests with the prerequisite for the next grade. We specifically looked first at second grade to third grade, right? Because they're going, and moving out of Beechwood, going to Deerfield, so, you know, what's coming up as things that the prerequisite showing they're not ready for, but they knew when they left us here at Beechwood. And then figuring out, you know, how we can have the teachers communicate a little bit more down and up K through five or above, so that we're, we're each helping each other to, you know, to get where we need to be and to prepare the children as best that we can.
So we've realized already, looking at the books, we, you know, we, I came over here to Beechwood, and Janelle has been over to Deerfield with me, and we're looking at the differences between a first-grade math book and a second-grade math book, and the jump to a third-grade math book is huge. It is just a phenomenal jump. And I've had the pleasure of teaching three, four, five, and I could tell you that the books are pretty consistent with how they present the materials in grades three through five, but the jumps between second and third, and the expectations of the kids to complete what is presented, is, is a big jump for them. So we're going to try to figure out how we can kind of both ends, not just, you know, have the second-grade teachers handle it, but how we can also see on a second and third grade level, how we can bridge those gaps that we're finding for the kids. We'll see what we can do as far as difficulty level. We want to make sure everything's debell mentally appropriate that we do with the kids, and we don't want to push them too hard, too fast. And if we have to take some time at the beginning of the school year to help kids to make that transition to the next grade level, then that's what we're going to do. Close reading, Dr. Lebarsky mentioned this. Close reading, Dr. Levarsky mentioned this, this is huge, it's a huge skill, not only for LAL, it's a huge skill for math. I've given Park now for all three years that it's been given. There's a lot of reading, there's a lot of language-based questions on Park throughout, not just in the language arts section, in the math section. The kids have to be able to read and read closely when they're reading those math problems and really understand what they're being asked to do in order to complete the problems correctly. So we need to make sure that they're transferring those skills also in the math arena.
Thank you so much. So now the next slide is going to explain, and Kim, you're going to talk about this, right? The six to eight, right? So how, how are we?
Surprise.
How are we providing support for low, because I think I was, I think we gave it to Christine and then we took it back.
We're doing a good job.
How are we providing support for low performing students? Because that is our biggest push right now. We want to get those students up and performing.
So starting last year, in, back in January, February, we really put on a full-on push to support our lowest achieving math students. And, and as well as taking a look at all of the scope and sequence that we have in our, in our math courses, we wanted to provide some supplemental instruction time for our lowest level students. So we have, once again this year, come back to offering a before-school year-long course. And the difference is that instead of just being one or two months where we tried to really fill in a few gaps right before the test, which did turn out to be successful for those students from 16 to 17, we now have it spread out over the whole course of the year. We've invited students to come, in particular, the students that really could use the help, and the syllabus is targeted to the needs of those students in the areas where they didn't score as well. And we've had a really positive response. All three of our middle school teachers have reached out personally to parents and really asked students to come. Because one of the things that we realized is that it's not cool for grades six, seven, and eight necessarily to ask for help on their own or do some of the areas that, and they really needed to build an, an opportunity where students felt comfortable to come in and really get the help that they need. And I think we're working well along that way. And so the invitations are out there, it's starting this week, and it's going to go all the way through May. We also have the OP classes and assistance all year. That's worked out, again, not just starting in January, but it's help that's put aside for specific students with specific syllabus so that we know we're targeting the areas that really need to grow. Math Space is going to be, I think, a really.
I'm sorry, Kim, what is OP?
Opportunity period, it's the other half of the lunch period for grades six, seven, and eight. It's an academic period, also it's a time where some of the kids are able to be a part of the music courses, but that's only a couple of days a week, and we've really tried to work it out in a way that they can be in these classes as well as have their choir and band. We've also added in both the classes, regular classes, and into these extra classes, a Math Space online math program. This is one that I learned about through Berkeley Heights. The math supervisor, Drew Ziobro, shared with me how they are using it in Berkeley Heights. It has become a part of a couple of their programs that they have. And our student, our teachers that are learning it in the summer went over and were a part of a training at Berkeley Heights on how to integrate it into our math program. Basically, it is probably a step up from the Khan Academy. The Khan Academy had a few glitches to it where students would get the extra practice that they needed, but they would have to come back and master tests multiple times. And it would just take a little bit longer to really ever get out of one unit and into the next. And so, you know, as we're all looking for the best program that is really going to work for our kids, we're finding that Math Space also gives us better feedback as teachers as to how many mistakes a student made, where they asked for help, because there are hints, how far they got, how much time they spent on it. And there's just a lot more instant feedback and usable data in terms of helping our students. So that is something that is already in, in progress and in place right now.
And now Christine's going to talk about what we're, how we're providing support for low performing students in some of the other grades.
Okay, for our A program, which is our basic skills program, we're moving more towards identifying students earlier and making sure we're providing them with assistance that they need with the CHOP study team, the IRNS committee, the BSI teachers at Beechwood, and our reading specialists. We've created new criteria for language arts and math, which now is allowing us to push in and pull out sooner, including working with our reading specialists. For students who scored a one or two on math with the LDTC, we started researching more intensive, like, skill-based programs such as the Math 180 and the Do Math so that the children are able to obtain the mathematical skills they need and then to apply it to a more language-based program like our Go Math. So we can give them that fighting chance that they need. And then for language arts, as we all know from research, reading comprehension does affect their levels when they're test-taking. So we are focusing on close reading, which is going to be K to eight and across all content areas. And we're going to start providing professional development with math training very soon. I believe maybe next month, we're going to be doing math training for all our teachers so that they have.
Yes. Get some of it today.
Yes, so that they can have an understanding of how our math scores are correlating with Park because we do see that our math scores really do determine how our children are going to do on Park. And as I mentioned, our close reading instruction is across all content areas and in grades K through eight, and the teachers have already started working on that.
So our future planning, our observations from all of this and our concerns is that between grades five and six, there is a reduction in scheduled time set in math instruction from approximately 90 minutes to 45 minutes per day when they get to the middle school schedule. We need to expand time on task either through longer math periods or additional targeted math courses or labs. And of course, if we're going to expand our math program, then we need to, we need to add additional personnel to support, support this expansion. So in our next year's budget, we're going to propose a math specialist who can work with both accelerated and remedial students and also support futures. And that concludes our presentation. If there are any questions?
That was a really cohesive and informative presentation and so much more granular and detailed and just so much better than anything we've seen in the last couple of years. And it's clear that you guys spent a lot of time looking at the, the data and really digging into what, what, what the issues are. And I also like that you didn't stand up and sugarcoat something and say, oh, you know, well, it's good and we're going to do this and we're going to, you really knew, it's clear that you took the time to look at what the issues were and figure out what the problems were and address them. So I give you guys a lot of credit for, for, for putting this together this time. I just, one quick question on the LAL. The, the, the close reading or the kind of broad spectrum, you know, across, across curricular, does that, do you see the LAL progress translating to social studies or science? And do those things, do they all interact with each other?
Well, we really have to make that happen. It's not just, I mean, for the students, they may be able to figure it out. But we have to do some direct teaching of that. And some of that has to be collaboration with our language arts teachers and our science subjects. And for last, all of our professional development time, they've actually been collaborating. Our language arts teachers have been sharing their rubrics and because the, the readers and writers.
Because you think that the social studies could back up the LAL, back up the math, back up the science, and that's how this whole thing's supposed to work?
There's different genres than the writing. There's different writing genres that the students are exposed to in language arts. And so what they did with the science and social studies, they sat together to say, well, this particular style or type of analytical writing, how would it fit into your sign? Is this science writing, is this social studies writing? If it is, then here's how we recommend you assign it and teach it. They've been.
Okay, and that's happening.
That is happening.
And you guys are seeing results-ish.
Well, we just, it was one of our, it's one of our goals this year to really push that. And not only the close writing, but the close, not only the different types of writing, but the close reading. And by that I mean, you have, you have to be able to look at a text and determine how to read this text. There's a difference between reading fiction, how to read a piece of fiction, how to read a piece of nonfiction, narrative nonfiction, scientific writing, scientific.
Analytical, right, all that.
Analytical, and so you have to be able to sort of change your stance based on, you don't have a lot of time under, you know, in a testing situation or when you have to go home and read a chapter. You have to be able to look at clues from the text to determine how you're supposed to read it and how you're, what kind of inference is you're supposed to make, what are you supposed to look for? If it's science, I'll be, I might be looking for formulas, I might be looking for whatever the type of science it is. If it's history, I might be looking for a cause and effect. You know, so they have to be able to understand the different structures of text and how it applies across the curriculum. So that is really what we're looking at.
Yeah, and I could just add that although social studies is not a tested subject, it really kind of is because in the language arts tests, the documents that come up. When it comes, when it comes up, the questions in LAL include documents that are social studies-type documents. So they're being asked to do, to be able to write on really anything in Park. So in that sense, although it's not a social studies test, they still have to express their opinions well in language arts, and it is about social. And the second thing I'd like to note is that our language arts teachers are our experts right now. They've had the staff development by Teachers College on a regular basis. Writing and creating argument is their specialty. So we've started having our language arts teachers spend time with the social studies teacher, coaching them or turnkeying their information. I don't want to say, you know, one's greater than the other, but that's their specialty. So within the social studies, so recently our PD, we just put the, the language arts teacher sitting down with the social studies teacher, we talked about different kinds of writing, as Dr. Levarsky just said. What are the rubrics, what's expected of a seventh grader, what's expected of an eighth grader? And so that's happening. And there have actually been a few of our staff development days with Teachers College where our social studies teachers and science teachers sat in and got the staff development on writing of their subject.
All right, good. And then one more quick thing on the math with the extra, looking at adding the extra hours. I was just going to, I, last week, was it last week? Last week I had the Berkeley Heights meeting and they did their Park presentation and they found, and I think I shared this with Nancy and the rest of the board, but they found that add, they have the same issues that we did. They were seeing the same kind of, and I guess you guys know because you had meetings, they said you had meetings with you. But that they added an extra, I think math is now an hour instead of 45 minutes. So, and they saw, they saw the result of, at where, where they had dropped off with 45. Bumping it back up to 60 really helped. So if we can figure out a way to do that, it seems like you're aware of it and that would be, what we can do.
I just had one question. I want to explore something Ms. Jenk said, the jump between second grade math and third grade math. I want to try and understand what you see that as. Is that math book or is it math topic? Because, and then just correct me if I'm wrong or confirm for me, we use Go Math K to eight. So, no.
We use Go Math K to five.
So, right, so is the jump, we're using a particular program for K to two?
It's the same program, and for whatever reason, I've actually even reached out to Go Math, and I will try to, to call to reach out.
Big corporation.
Or my emails. We just noticed that the, what they're expected to do in, just physically in the math book, the expectations of the output of the child is so different from the expectation when they go into third grade, what they should be able to do, whether it's independently or even with assistance from the teacher. It's, you would almost think it's a different program, and it's not.
Right, okay, that's what it sounded like to me.
It does. I mean, and it's, when you do look at the text side by side, you're, you're kind of amazed at how did they think that from second grade, and I'm actually curious too for other districts using Go Math, if they're finding a similar issue. It's just, we happen to go into a different school building.
Right.
In third grade, which complicates it a little more that they're in a different school. But I'm, I'm curious too if other districts using Go Math are also finding that there's that kind of a gap between second and third where the expectations just skyrocket. Three, four, five is consistent with, you know, the layout and the expectations and the type of problems and the thinking that they're asking the kids to do. So there's a consistency there, but we have to figure out how we can get these kids to feel a little bit, I think, more prepared and more comfortable with what's being asked of them.
Right, and sort of to follow up on that too, I kind of got from your talk. You've had to sort of adjust the Go Math book.
Correct.
To align with the testing. So I mean, to me, I'm looking at two things with the Go Math program that you guys are working at addressing.
Yes.
So I'm, in my mind, I'm saying.
You're questioning them.
Question. Again, I'm not putting that on you, but I'm saying that those seem like two.
We know why we are using Go Math.
Maybe fine, but.
Maybe fine, but maybe not in New Jersey in the face of Park.
I don't know, I'm not putting that on you now, but I'm saying.
And I will, I could tell you from being a parent in a, in a different school district who uses a different program, that I, I remember very vividly when my son was first taking Park that we jumped from chapter to chapter to lesson, and it was like, whoa, where are we? And we never got through a chapter, it seemed like, before, because everything was aligned to Park. So I don't think right now, I'm sure it'll come, and Pearson will probably make it. There probably will become a program.
Then they'll change the test.
That's, that's aligned, but right now, I, I think fourth grade's the hardest right now to align as far as it's a little bit more difficult to move around the material. Fifth grade, I think it's a little bit easier because we can move that chapter. Third grade too seems to be a little easier. Fourth grade is tough. Fourth grade has a lot of different standards and a lot of different places. So we're trying to make sure, it's, it's really hard when you know you have a deadline to, that they're going to get tested no matter what you cover. So, but it is, we're definitely all aware of it.
No, and I. When you figure it out, will you make sure to come back? You don't have to wait till next year at this time, come back and tell us what your issues are.
I also want to make the point that there is sometimes a false assumption that the met, that, that you start on page one, chapter one, and go all the way to the end of the book.
Well, in all possible worlds, if the best solution, that is the case. It's no longer the case with certain series.
And I don't know if it ever was the case because it, because if you have your curriculum based on themes and good practice and what you know is developmentally appropriate, there may be some switching around. And it's not, it's not sacrilegious to go to chapter three if the T, if the, you know, it may be a good book, but there just may need to be some switching around, you know?
It's all the time in history and other subjects.
Actually, there's a series, if you don't mind looking into it.
Yeah, but math is, math is.
I've, I've, it's worth the time. It's called Eureka Math. It started as Engage New York, and it's a group of teachers who are giving this massive grant to write this phenomenal math program that actually goes from first grade up to high school. It's a phenom, there are no jumps, it is aligned exactly to the Park, although it is aligned to the Park. Excuse me?
That was quick work if they did that.
It's free. Except other than you have to buy the books, which is just workbooks, consumes far cheaper than buying these big heavy textbooks. Again, it's Eureka Math. It is a, it's unbelievable, it's across the country and they're using it, more and more countries are using it. You could, more and more states within the country, excuse me, are using it. Actually, I shouldn't say that, more and more countries are actually using it also, just across the globe. It is an amazing program. I'm, I'm not a fan of the Park, we all know that. It is absolutely not testing on the kids' capabilities, but we have no choice, so we have to move forward. But this is just a great way of teaching math. It's just a terrific series. It's, it's definitely worth a look.
Yeah, I just want to, I, I want to thank you for that because it just seems like you've had to put a lot of hours in and I appreciate that.
And there is a lot of hours.
Again, like, like Jeannie said, no, I want to hear it all, so I appreciate that you found it.
You're clearly looking and seeing what the issue is and saying.
It was easy, it was easy. We opened it up and the person was like, what?
A second grade math book has six to eight questions on a page, and a third grade has 16 to 18. The font is smaller, it's, there's more on a page, it's hard to track, it's hard to follow. I was overwhelmed, I opened it up and whoa! Thankfully, K to two, there's not so much of a jump. Kindergarten, we have one, two questions, but sometimes there's six. But in the third grade, I mean, the very first chapter that they started with had a lot on one page, and it was probably incredibly overwhelming content, but also the format. And I think that probably has a lot to do with it too.
Well, no, thank you for finding that.
Yeah, of course.
Oh, and just go back to Eureka Math for a minute. Khan Academy has recognized how terrific the program is, so Khan Academy has lined themselves up to Eureka Math.
Everyone's talking to Khan Academy.
Along with, which is also free, right to that program. It's definitely.
That sounds interesting.
It's a phenomenal, it's not easy, it's, it's a difficult program to teach, but it is, for just math in general, it's just a great program and it aligns very nicely.
And before Dante gets going, also people were raving about Math Source up at Berkeley Heights from all the way down. Math Space.
Yeah, they, Math.
Oh my gosh, they, everybody, the parents got up, and then the kids got up, and then the teachers got up. So I don't know anything about math.
I think they're, we're even doing some summer work.
Did you have something?
Little study, keeping kids up, not losing it over the summer, having some Math Space practice.
The kids seem to like it, apparently. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if she's going to like math, but somebody said that.
Did you have something you were?
No, we're going to use Math Space more and more, that's all.
Okay.
So, I have fewer questions than usual, but I think you guys did a good job. The one thing that for me would make this better than it is, and maybe this is really not on you, it's more on us, we probably need a benchmark, right? The state used to give us, give us that DFG benchmark, but right now there's really no true peer benchmarking on this document. And we know the state and we know the Park across the country is not right. So we, that's something.
But that would come in the spring when they do the comparison, right? In our spring presentation?
We could have it. We could have it now if we created a benchmark.
They did not give us, with the onset of Park, they are silent now on the peer group. I mean, I still have the peer group from the New Jersey AS. We could use that.
So you're saying like when we do just our scores also have the benchmark?
Yeah.
And then in the spring, when we do our scores compared to whatever we decide to compare it to, that we use it then too?
Right, so you know seventy, so you know seventy percent's a good number.
A measure of growth, or at least another measure of growth.
So that's, I think, I think that would be just something that would be really good. So when we talked about, I guess some of the underperforming kids, I just want to make sure I understood this, we talked about moving to skill-based, math 180 on six to eight and do the math in K to five. Is that supplemental or is that a different?
The do the math is Go Math. It's just more skill-based. Go Math is very language-based. So if you have a student who is struggling in language arts, it's going to impact them in math. And it's kind of like a domino effect. So what we were, what I did was I worked with my LTC and we looked at programs that other districts were using for their at-risk students. And one of the things that Go Math has, it has the Do Math. So it's aligned with the Go Math, so the kids can work on their skills, they learn the mathematical skills, and then the teacher can bring them into doing the more language-based work that is more Park geared, because we know Park isn't going to give us two plus two. It's going to give us a language-based program, a question. So we want them to at least be able to obtain the skills and then generalize that skill in a more language-based program. Kind of throwing them in there and saying, we know you have a, you know, an issue with the language part of it. It's just, it's just more difficult for the kids. And we want them to achieve success. We want them to say, we love math. This is great. I got a great grade. And, and then to be able to generalize that skill in a more language-based program.
Right, so it's really, layman's terms, it's a slightly different curriculum that's, you're differentiating and focusing on a group of students.
Right. We're, we're still working on the same curriculum though.
Yeah.
So there's still, the teacher would do a lesson and then just like they do now, they break them up into different groups and maybe three groups will be working out of Go Math and then there's one group that's working out of Do the Math.
It's less language-based, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of that. I think children learn different and we really need to think that way, you know? You have to differentiate the instruction if that's what it takes to get a child to the next level. So I thought that's what I was hearing and glad that is. So I wasn't being combative. I actually just wanted to confirm I heard it right. Oh, the only, the only concern I had in the, maybe it's not a concern, but I'm just wanted to state it. On the geometry and algebra, a couple of times we said we let all the kids that qualify into that group. I just want to make sure we continue that. I think, you know, pushing those kids that at next, next level is a good thing.
So do we.
Okay. So that, that's just something that I think is great. I think, you know, learning for the sake of learning and kids pushing themselves to the next level, you know, maybe that takes some kids out of that other group, but all in all, I feel like that's just the better paradigm for our school. And I think that's, believe it or not, that's all I, oh, one other thing. So for the sixth grade, I like the idea of increasing the, the time from 45 to 60 minutes if we're looking in that direction. The only thing I would call out, and I don't know if you've given it any thought, you do move curriculums from fifth to sixth grades and then you reduce the amount of time. So it's almost a, you know, a double whammy. So I don't know how that's impacting the sixth graders as well.
By cha, you're saying because we change from Go Math to, to Big Ideas?
And then you reduce the time.
And then you reduce the time.
I really think that reducing the time in instruction has been the major portion, but we have to take a look at our, our program, the, the text.
Because when they were originally picked, they were, they were chosen because they were compatible, even though it's a different program.
Right.
Sometimes it, you make a different choice for middle school because what's good in K five in a particular publishing company, they may not offer the same kind of, you know, what, the challenge for six to eight. So it doesn't necessarily mean they're both not aligned, but it's still, you bring up a good point. It may not just be the time, it may be the program.
And the Big Ideas really isn't, well, in my opinion, is not really well aligned to how the Park is tested. It goes back to the old textbooks that we've had forever. It's done a little differently, a little bit more Park-related, but on a whole, it's just repackaging the same kind of math program that we've seen.
Well, you know, last year we really learned a lot about our scope and sequence when we went back in there and really dug in between what the, the curriculum on the state, the model curriculum on the state. In other words, what it is we, our students should know in what order, in the general order, and how, what was being taught in chapter by chapter, unit by unit in Big Math, in Big Ideas, as well as the algebra and not so much the geometry. So that was a really growing period for us from, I would say, January through the test. And I think we're looking at everything just a little bit more carefully, a little bit differently. Is Big Ideas the best one for us for the future? And when we get around to that in our strategic plan and, you know, working with Dr. Lebarzki, when that comes, that's certainly one of the things we ought to look at. The schedule for next year could impact instruction time, time on task. I think that we're going to look at that. How many kids, should we move as many kids as possible up into algebra? I know Berkeley Heights is thinking about moving all of their kids into, moving them forward as mu, or as many as possible. So we have to talk about what's best for us and really be able to put everything on the table that will really allow us to have our kids move forward. So we're, that investigate, we're taking a look at that right now to be able to come back with more answers. Thanks, everyone.
I have a question. You mentioned you were going to do pull-out, right?
For A, for BSI.
Okay. Do you have any class support now in that class?
Do you mean like in class, like resource special ed or?
For, for the students in the.
Okay, the special ed programs are.
Yeah, I'm not talking special ed.
Okay, you're talking just spaces. It depends on the students' needs, how the students have been brought up to IRNS. Because right now, what we've done up until this point is we've looked at if kids need BSI, they should be referred to the IRNS committee. And then the IRNS committee meets together with the parents and they determine, well, does a child need a push-in service? Does a child need a pull-out? But what we've done now is we revamped it so that we look at criteria that's black and white and we determine, does this child need services immediately? And depending if they're at risk or if they're just at the cusp, if they're at the cusp, we'll push in. If they're more at risk, we're going to pull, we're going to pull them out and work one-on-one with that.
But, but you don't have, in a math class, sometimes another supplemental teacher in class support?
Only if there's classified children in there that the IAT is.
I know, special ed, I know that.
Right. But that teacher works with both students though.
Okay. No, I was just wondering, I thought, you know, you're always doing pull-out.
Right. We do have aim push-in, like.
We do have aim push-in teachers.
But that's on a student need basis.
If that's all the questions from the board, I know this is a very important topic. So if anybody from the public has anything you want to ask about the presentation now while everybody's here, and you're more than welcome to come up and talk about the, you know, questions about the presentation only at this time. Okay?
All right, guys, do a good job.
Oh, you do?
Up, there's questions.
You come up, come up and state your name. You have to, please come to the podium.
It's cool.
I just.
No.
Name and address, please.
Michelle Plumb, 1324 Outlook Drive East. Just want to thank the teachers so much and the administration for everything they do for our children. Just a quick question. So having a second grader going into third grade with the math, just want to make sure like over the summer, if there'll be things that the parents can do at home, or I just want to make sure that the second graders are then prepared for that rigor of the, the third grade math. So I'm not expecting answers now, but just.
We'll give you some.
I'll give you a couple.
Jenk will give you some answers.
There is a, I'm getting ready for the next grade level that is included in the Go Math program. It used to be at the end of the math book. Now, for whatever reasons, they've made it online. So what we can do, and I know Janelle had to go, but we talked about that it would be very easy for us to print out these packets and send them home. And these are skills that they need going into the next grade level. So we would be able to give those to everybody, especially second grade going into third, and be able to preview what's going to happen.
And I think that would be great. I think a lot of parents would appreciate that and teachers, you know, we all need to work together as a team. So we work at home with our students too, and that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Julie Wright, 1462 Forest Drive. You are increasing the time in math?
Well.
Is that math instruction is increasing? Was that my understanding?
This year, this year there's no change in the schedule, but we're taking a look as a result of the, the Park scores.
So where is the extra time going to come from?
That's what we have to figure out. I mean, that part is up for discussion. I have three or four possible ways to build into the schedule, but first I have to make sure that the schedule works and then staffing and personnel for those are a part of that. So budget is part of that, all the things that we've talked about.
Okay.
So I don't have an exact.
Recession isn't going to be taken, or lunch?
No.
Okay.
No recess or lunch.
All right, it's on film. That's documented.
Not a, well, three through five is already.
Not in my planning at this point.
All right, six. Six, seven, eight don't have recess anyway.
Six, seven, eight don't have recess. Six, seven, eight don't have recess. So the sixth grade.
But we would probably talk about that when we're doing our budget. So if anyone wanted more information, that'd be a great time to come and listen.
March, April.
And if you have any comments, you know, we'd certainly take them under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, nothing else at this time? Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much.
You're free to leave the country. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you, guys. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Parker for her liaison report.
Okay, I just, really quickly, the, the Berkeley Heights did its Park and preliminary ACT and AP presentation last week, but because we were going to be doing this, I knew it was going to go long. I think I'll just save that until next time, but if anybody wants to take a look at the high school ACT and AP preliminary, preliminary presentation, which will be followed up in the spring, it's online at their website. And the only other thing I wanted to report on was they had the Second Annual College Fair, which had, again, just re-reviews, I think they had 150 schools all across the board and they did, I think I had mentioned before that they had had earlier parents of kids in special ed could come, and there were schools that specifically had special ed programs there to meet the parents, meet the kids, talk. So that program has, it started a year ago, it's expanded already exponentially. Feedback from the parents is great and the schools are really into it. And they get a ton of, you know, feedback about how, how well-run it is and how much they could be there, so.
The level of college is not there.
Oh, it just, all, there's not a, yeah.
I mean, just across the board.
And they kept adding till up to the last minute. I mean, they were in, I think, four different areas, that's how many schools there are. It's going to be College Day by the time we're done next year. But anyway, so that was that. I just wanted to report this.
I just wanted to let you know too, I got some feedback, some very good feedback on, I don't know if they call it open house for the seventh and eighth graders going up. Somebody approached me and said what a great opportunity it was for him to bring his eighth grader up there. So I just wanted to let you know that was.
Oh, good, because that's another thing that they've really been.
I got good feedback on that.
Working on outreach between, and also a lot of combined stuff with Columbia and Deerfield, so that that transitions easier. And at the meeting last week, I think I briefly mentioned it, but tonight, but they talked about how they were meeting with Kim and her team and they said that that went really well and the good exchange of ideas of both ways. So I'm just glad to see that we're doing that. And I think this was particular to math, but it also goes to the other subjects.
And just a quick question on that. I know the high school sent some kids over to Columbia High School. Talk about what the kids are going to look for. Do they come here also?
Yes, they do. Mm-hmm. Wonderful. They had 95% of students from Columbia and Deerfield go up to Jalen.
Oh, no, like.
No, but I mean, like just outreach, like talk, like that's part of their, their outreach is, is talking to like the seventh and eighth graders. Is that what you're talking about, about what it's like up at the school?
No, I know, like, some, one of them, they were asked, he, as a high school student, he's a senior, he's asked to go to Columbia, you know, for the kids, and for the kids at Columbia to talk about, ask questions, what, what are they looking for? And I didn't know if they did that here, because I asked him, he goes, I don't know. So I don't think it's a different, very cool. Because it's a great idea. I love that.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to a motion to approve items one through eight. Number eight was added via addendum, which are Dr. Lebarzki's goals for this year.
So move.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Joya.
Yes.
Mrs. Jackesits.
Yes.
Mr. Minks.
Yes.
Mrs. Mots.
Mr. Venice.
Yes.
Motion to approve under budget and finance, items one through eight. Comments, comments or questions?
Yeah, I, you know, I just want to comment on four. I don't really underst... I feel like that's an overreach by the state.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, in our particular case, if you remember, when we were looking at a food provider, we were looking at quality of food, not just the fixed price, and I just, I think that's ridiculous that they would try to mandate something like that.
So what's gonna happen now? Is everyone rejecting it, and do you know?
It's unanimous with rejection. It's New Jersey School Boards, the association I belong to, which is New Jersey ASBO, which is, had, came up with this resolution, as well as the associations that have the superintendents and the principals. So, and what this is proposing is, in order to be, to give them, concede something to them, is say, have it so you have an option of keeping it the way it is now, with more flexibility for boards, or doing what you want to do with this fixed price. So they're not saying, don't do it, they're saying, just have, leave the option to do it the way it's done today.
I mean, they're just looking to put junk food in the schools.
I'm just wondering if there's a way for them to push it through anyway, because sometimes that's what happens. So I'm wondering if this is actually gonna make a difference. Have you heard if, you know, when's the final decision, and are we gonna get stuck with this anyway?
This isn't, I believe, until the eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Nineteen twenty school year.
Yeah.
So it's quite a ways out, but my guess is that they will, that they will allow an option to stay the way you are.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Joya.
Yes.
Mrs. Jackesons.
Yes.
Mr. Minks.
Yes.
Mrs. Mott.
Yes.
Mrs. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Ruben.
Yes.
Mr. Venice.
Yes.
Motion to approve under personnel, items one through nine.
Second.
Comments or questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I think last time my contract...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Had the wrong language, and it was approved as a new contract.
Oh, it was approved as an amendment.
And it really was a new contract, so this is with the correct language.
Right, we took the five-year contract, converted it to a three-year, so we've... Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Joya.
No to one, yes to two through nine.
Mrs. Jackesons.
Yes.
Mr. Minks.
Yes.
Mrs. Mott.
Yes.
Mrs. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Ruben.
Yes.
Mr. Venice.
Yes.
Motion to approve under curriculum, item one.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Are they going to Wendy's, like the family?
I don't know, because I was wondering.
Don't they usually call it the kids' design, is that what they decide?
Oh, is that what they pick?
Is that what, is that, there's no other Wendy's, right?
I don't know.
I think, you know, I don't know, I think there might be some offset.
Yeah, they go in, and you don't know, I think they pick...
To Wendy's?
Yeah, it seems like it's...
Maybe they're gonna get baked potatoes.
No, I don't think so.
And also, it's not the kids.
I know.
It's definitely not everybody's...
I'm just asking.
Sometimes you can go to Wendy's for crying out loud.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? They do make salads. Roll call, please.
Mr. Joya.
Yes.
Mrs. Jackesons.
Yes.
Mr. Minks.
Yes.
Mrs. Mott.
Yes.
Mrs. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Ruben.
Yes.
Mr. Venice.
Yes.
Motion to approve under policy, items one and two.
So moved? Second.
Comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Joya.
Yes.
Mrs. Jackesons.
Yes.
Mr. Minks.
Yes.
Mrs. Mott.
Yes.
Mrs. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Ruben.
Yes.
Mr. Venice.
Yes.
Old business.
Yeah, I actually have a question, old business. Last time, we had a pretty long conversation on the pickup after school here. Is there a recap of what we've done?
Yes, it was here.
Case solved.
Can we recap it just really shortly? No.
Well, yeah, we had some, parents came with some concerns about, that it was chaotic in nature, and so the next day, I worked with Mrs. Roscoe to come up with a different pattern of movement, so that parents are circling in and picking up their kids in the gym and coming out a different door. And it's much more orderly, and I think parents overall are pleased, and they're getting out more efficiently, there's not people kind of hanging out and blocking the door. So I think overall, we solved that problem.
I think the other old business item is we discussed our concern with all the new curbing and paving and parking, our concern with the plowing of the parking lot, which, if not done in conjunction with the new layout that we just worked to fix, that it could really make that difficult to traverse. So I think we, as a board, are looking into other options right now. The lots are plowed through the town, and we're looking into other ways that we can address the plowing in-house, meaning either doing plowing with our staff may be an option, or contracting directly with another company, so that we have control over, we can, our maintenance staff can train them about how we need to plow, where we want the snow, so we don't block sidewalks.
There's more continuity.
More continuity, more coordination between our janitors, who do a tremendous job cleaning everything, sidewalks, walkways, drive, you know, entrances, and then the plowing, if not coordinated, can block that all back in. So we have enough, enough of a concern with the system of how everybody's being dropped off and picked up, plus the fact that we just spent a lot of money putting in all-new curbing and paving. So we're looking into options that we may have as a board to address it.
Another old business item is the playground equipment, and our application for matching grant for the playground equipment. While the absolute result of that, the official results of that application have not yet been received, we have received some unofficial word that a grant was approved, and we're looking forward to see exactly to what extent, and to have some funds to apply to the replacement of the playground equipment, and that should be in the very near future. The freeholders are voting on it on Thursday, so we hope to have some good news in the near future with respect to that.
And just a, yeah, I was gonna say, the freeholders vote on it, but the money goes, doesn't come directly to us, it goes to council.
But then they just decide...
Goes to council, because this was part of an application that we made with the council. They were good enough to coordinate with us to try to get us the money for our playground.
But the grant was thirty thousand dollars, right?
That we requested.
Right, that we requested, okay. And we've already raised the matching thirty thousand dollars, which you have to do first.
The budget is sixty, you have to, whatever you ask for in a grant, you have to have that.
And that's the money that the MEF and the PTO, and we've got that. Okay.
That's...
And before you, like, you had to have that money in place before we applied?
Before you applied.
You have to have the committee. You have to have the sixty in place, because it's a reimbursement. Oh, right, because they reimburse it, okay.
So you have to show viability of the project before they can award the grant.
Okay, excellent.
Any other old business? Any new business?
One new business item is our facility's use, and our field's use, and there was recently a, an incident, or if you would, that occurred on the property, that was a violation of some of the express rules of our existing board policy for use of our school facilities. That incident, I'm not gonna go into the specifics, but it was actually addressed somewhat proactively by the organization that had use of the fields at that time, which was very comforting to see, but nevertheless, there was an incident. And that's caused us, as a board, to look, as part of our best practices, to look at the enforcement of policy seventy-five-ten, which is the use of school facilities policy, our administration of that policy, to make sure that the district is adequately covered by the requisite insurance certificates permitting, permissions, and it's come to, really, it's kind of boiled down to us recognizing as a board that I don't think there is adequate, and I think others on the board believe it, there's not adequate understanding of exactly who's using our facilities at certain times. And we're gonna take a hard look at the policy, a hard look at how the fields and indoor facilities are being administered, so that we are assured that the school district is not put in a vulnerable position, and that we are at all times aware and comfortable and confident that we know who's using the facilities when, and that all the requisite prerequisites and procedures are being followed to the letter.
And as per some efforts many years ago, scheduling of fields was transferred to the rec department. So that's a communication that issue, as Mr. Minks stated, that we've gotta get a better understanding of who's using our fields and when.
Reexamine it and make sure that nothing's being dropped.
Right, there has to be a relationship of us being told as they're scheduled what the issue, you know, who's using it.
And if we wanted to, we could take the scheduling back ourselves, we could...
That's certainly something we could consider.
Well, we gotta consider all of it.
Right, but I'm just saying, that's like one of the...
Above all, whether we're doing it or a third party's doing it, we have to make sure that the applications have specificity, we know who's using, who's purporting to use the fields, for what purpose.
Who's insured.
Who's insured, making sure that we're named appropriately, making sure the insurance is adequate, that it's placed by a viable insurer. I mean, you know, these are all commercial standard provisions that we just have to make sure are in place. I honestly think we should think, as a board, of also, and this is just my lawyer hat being put back on, but I think we should consider indemnity agreements, rather than just a recital that they will indemnify us in the policy. I think we may want to have a formal written form of indemnity that any applicant to utilize the facilities is signing. Again, it's a commercially reasonable type of requirement, that I don't think will be offensive to these groups, and if it is, then perhaps we should be more wary about their use of the facilities.
And this is the fields and the gym, all of our facilities?
School facilities in general is what the school owns, and that goes to the field at Borough Hall, the school district owns that. It goes to all the fields here, all the indoor facilities.
We still schedule the buildings. The use of our gyms is still scheduled in-house.
Okay, I got confused there.
The field use was scheduled, is scheduled through that.
And again, I'm not saying that that might, the right answer would be for us to take that schedule back.
Yeah, no, I mean, that could be...